The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Cruzen, nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Daley of Green Pastor Christian Church and friend of the Alderman from the twenty-seventh, Alderman Carter.
Amen. If we could all stand and bow our heads and have a moment of prayer, amen. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you on today. We acknowledge you even in our ways on today. Father, we thank you for your word, Lord. We thank you for your supernatural ability that will come in and empower us, Lord, in our natural endeavors, Father. And you said in your word, if we would acknowledge you in all our ways, then you shall direct our path. Now, Father, begin to resonate upon the hearts and the minds even of your people. This very country was built on, "In God we trust." And so, Father, we trust you on today, and that is our acknowledgements being made unto you. Now, be who you are and be God and ruler in our souls and in our lives. Lord, we thank you that all business that's conducted on today will be done in decency and in order. Now, Father, we thank you, Lord, now come into the room, even now, and begin to change the hearts and the minds of your people. Give us rest on today. Give us a sovereignty. Give us, in the name of Jesus, give us something that will be able to be effective on today, and that's the supernatural power that only you can give us. Do what we can't do. Be who we can't be. Encourage our hearts, Father. Begin to allow us not to mix pleasure with business, Lord, but in business, allow us to be men, in the name of Jesus. And, Lord, we thank you on today. In the name of Jesus Christ, we do pray this prayer. Let every heart say, "Amen."
It's a great prayer. We're gonna have to have Pastor Daley come back again. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Miss Stephanie Robinson of Ameri-Uwe and Mr. Piggy of Steve Stone's office. Thank you.
Any further, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have my honored guests, Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions? Any further, Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As my honored guest today, I'd like to have David Holmes from St. Louis Labor Club and Mike Grady from Plumbers and Pipe Pitters Local 562.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Pastor Daley from Green Pastor's Church, Brother Anthony Shaheed, and the Honorable John Collins. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Brother Shaheed. It's good to see you here. Welcome, brother. Any further, Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Gary Otten from Painters District Council Number Two, Jeff Hans from the Carpenters Union, Demetrius Alfred, who's absent today, and Jim Sonderman from the Water Division.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Anthony Lencia with AGC.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us Clint McBride. Clint, thanks for joining us today. Alderman from the twentieth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I noticed that Sheila Jones is also here from Ameri and along with Ms. Robinson this morning.
We also have Mr. C. Sharp. C., thank you for coming today. This young man does things all over the country, and he's from St. Louis, and he puts an inspirational message out for these kids. So, C., could you please stand up so we can hear you? Thank you for coming. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on January the twenty-third. For all you folks who don't know, this is National Measure Your Feet Day. I don't make these things up. These are all available to you. And as the Alderman from the twenty-second is very fond of saying, "You know what they say about big feet? Big shoes."
Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on approval of the minutes. You recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the approval of the minutes from January ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Come back to line item eight. First reading of Board Bill.
Board Bill two-five-three, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-two-nineteen Regal Place and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-four, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine-twenty-three Cleveland Avenue and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-six-forty Arsenal Street containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-six, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-four-thirty-one Holly Hills Avenue and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-four-forty-eight Oakland Avenue and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingrassia and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nineteen-seventeen Rutgers Street containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-five-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the amended and restated redevelopment agreement by and between the City and North Side regeneration and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-sixty, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingrassia and ordinance amending the definitions under the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency repealing section two of ordinance six-seven-one-one-nine enacting a new section in lieu thereof to include the definition, source of income, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-six-one, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five-nineteen Botanical and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-six-two, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five-thirty-two Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-six-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and Alderman Bosley and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Cass-Jefferson, Parnell, Montgomery Street, North Twenty-Second Street redevelopment area. And Board Bill two-six-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen and ordinance authorizing the city to execute a corporation agreement to amend in part the agreement incorporated into ordinance six-nine-seven-three-two and allowing for the city, the Great Rivers-Greenway District and the City Arch River two thousand and fifteen Foundation to provide procedures for their cooperation in the design, completion, and ongoing operation, care, and maintenance of City Blocks one-four and one-thirty-one and containing a severability clause, a governance clause, and an emergency clause. That's extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill two-five-three, two-five-four, two-five-five, two-five-six, two-five-seven, two-five-eight, two-six-one, and two-six-two to the Housing Committee, Board Bills two-sixty, two-sixty-three, and two-five-nine, and to the Parks Committee, Board Bill two-six-four. That's extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill two-thirty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission of Board of Public Service and the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and establishing a multi-year public works and improvement program at Lambert Airport and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-thirty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to institute and execute two automated teller machine concession agreements at Lambert Airport between the city and the following concessionaires, Bank of America, Cardtronics, granting to each concessionaire the right license and privilege to operate a non-exclusive ATM concession at the airport and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two-four-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing issuance by the city of this airport revenue refunding bond series two thousand and fifteen and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to effect the refunding of all or portion of the city's outstanding airport revenue refunding bonds series two thousand and five and containing a severability clause. The following bills were reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill one-nine-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to honorarily designate Walton as Reverend Melvin Smotherson Avenue. Board Bill one-ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to honorarily designate Goodfellow between Enright and Delmar as Reverend Tommy C. Ringo Boulevard. Board Bill one-ninety-eight, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Cruzen, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Cohn, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderman Carter, and ordinance repealing ordinance six-eight-six-six-three, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance relating to complete streets policy stating guiding principles and practices so that the transportation improvements are planned, designed, and constructed to encourage walking, bicycling, transit use, and transit use while promoting safe operations for all users. Board Bill two-two-six, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing two thousand and fifteen St. Louis Works and Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Programs citywide appropriating five million five hundred thousand dollars from the Street Improvement Fund containing the Mayor's Executive Orders, Contract Advertising Statutes, and a Public Work Emergency Clause. Board Bill two-forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Emerson at the northeast corner of Emerson and at the southwest corner of Emerson at Lilian and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Villa and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the excess portion of Holly at the western line of Grand adjacent to City Block. Board Bill two-four-six, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the sixty-foot portion of Wise between King's Highway and Brother Thornton Way of budding forty-nine, forty-eight through fifty of the east-west alley of budding forty-nine, thirty-six through fifty Wise and bounded by Wise, King's Highway, Manchester, and Hereford. Board Bill two-forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on Parkview Place from Euclid to King's Highway. Board Bill two-forty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingrassia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the east-west alley in City Block eighteen-fourteen bounded by Shoto, Jefferson, LaSalle, and Ohio. Board Bill two-fifty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the western north-south alley beginning at Delore and continuing north and fifteen-foot wide east-west alley bounded by Delore, Atkins, Walsh, and Morganford. The following Board Bill was brought out of Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill two-twenty-one, Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, President Reed, Alderman Conway, Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, and Alderwoman Green, and ordinance pertaining to competitive bidding and composition of workforce and containing a severability clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill one-thirty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance pertaining to Tilly's Corner located at thirteen-forty-five through fifty-five North Garrison and at Sheridan, having as subject matter the designation of the property as a city landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill one-thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance pertaining to New Age Federal Savings and Loan Building located at fourteen-oh-one North King's Highway, having as subject matter the definition of the property as a city landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill one-four, two-fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance repealing ordinance six-eight-nine-four-three and enacting a new ordinance confirming the prohibition of the issuance of package or liquor license for any premises within the boundaries of the twenty-fourth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-twenty, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance affirming the prohibition of the issuance of any package liquor license for any premises within the boundaries of the fifteenth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize.
Mr. President, I would like to take Committee Substitute for Board Bill number twelve off our informal calendar.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, and seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. We perfect Board Bill number twelve, Committee Substitute as amended. Alderman, would you like to, do you have a floor substitute?
Yes. Mr. President, members of the board, there should be a floor substitute for Committee Substitute of Board Bill number twelve. That should be on your desk. I've moved for adoption, the floor substitute.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the eight, that we adopt, that we introduce floor substitute for Board Bill number twelve, Committee Substitute as amended. Entertaining a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. It's been a request. Row call. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingrassia, Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
No.
Alderman Honowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
I didn't hear you. Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Cohn.
No.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrassia. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Howard.
No.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Rhodey.
Change Alderman Conway to a no.
Alderman Kennedy.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Williamson.
Change, change President Reed to a no. This lady won't get his, won't get his, won't get his bond money this year.
Seven aye votes, fifteen no votes, three, uh, two present.
By a vote, you failed to stay in the motion. Alderman from the eighth, Alderman from the eighth, you still have the floor.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Committee Substitute for Board Bill number twelve is a unique opportunity for us to place in front of the voters the opportunity to determine whether or not they want to go ahead and take responsibility for general obligation bonds, to buy much-needed rolling stock for the fire department, police department, to commit money for bicycle infrastructure, bridges, demolition, and ward capital improvements. The reason that we're here today, and legislation is never made easily, and I think my good friend from the eleventh ward or his father used to say it was like making softies. It might not be pretty. When the president and the mayor and the comptroller, comptroller, all had different perspectives as all the way down to the finite last couple of hundred thousand dollars where everything should go, they came together and finally resolved their issues among themselves. What we're trying to do today is pass this in time so that your constituents and my constituents could have the opportunity to determine themselves in April whether or not they wanted to pass a general obligation bond for the city for these specific items. And what the floor substitute was that was just voted down was some final reconciliations between, you know, the mayor, the comptroller, and the president of the board. In order to make these improvements for us as citizens and for the city of St. Louis, if you look at the fire department and the police department, when our ambulances, they have three and four hundred thousand miles on it, you know, we need the opportunity to replace this rolling stock. You can't do it out of general revenue. And you have to determine today, do you want to give the voters in your ward the opportunity to determine what our future capital needs are? Do they want to tax themselves for those future needs? Now, under both scenarios, whether it would have been the floor substitute or the current bill, under both scenarios, I do this for memory, my memory's not too bad, but if you'd had a fifty thousand dollar home, the tax cost tentatively to one of your residents would be fourteen dollars a year. It's a hundred thousand dollar home, twenty-eight or twenty-nine dollars. But what we're asking is an opportunity, whether you like the component parts of exactly where each of these dollars go, whether or not you like that, the voters are the ones that get to say. And when you have these component parts, the one thing that we've always found, as long as our constituents believe that the money will go to where we're saying it's going, they generally will be receptive. Now, this has to be sold to the voters in April, but we're not passing the tax increase. We're not today obligating the city. It does have to go to the voters, and those are the ones that get to determine the future. And so, what I'm asking for today is your support on Committee Substitute for Board Bill
Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Carter, didn't we just vote down Committee Substitute?
No.
Bring before, I'm sorry, we, to bring it before us, I thought.
No.
Or was that a?
No, the, right now was before is.
Committee Substitute, not the floor subs, not the floor.
Yeah, it's the perfection of Committee Substitute as a meant, not the floor substitute.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I gotta, I gotta go deep back into the memory banks to remember how this bill was developed. And I'm sure there's some things I've forgotten since it's been eight or nine months really since we finished vetting a lot of the things in the bill. You know, in a, in a bill that's a hundred ninety-five or two-hundred million dollars, I'm sure we can all go through this and find, you know, a million dollars here, a million dollars there that we think isn't perfect, and that's fine. But there is, you know, we, where I had on the Capitol Committee the opportunity to really go through most of this in depth, and there's really just some, maybe boring things to voters, but from a, from the perspective of having to operate city government and deliver public safety, fire protection services, trash pickup, there's really just some compelling things in the bill. You can't argue with the fact that the trash trucks are old, they're wearing out. You can't argue with the fact that the fire trucks are old, they're wearing out. You can't argue with the fact that the roofs on the firehouses are thirty, forty years old. We have to, we have to invest the money to, to replace a lot of stuff to make sure we can continue to deliver services to residents. So, I would, I would, you know, I have opposed some tax increases in the past, certainly, but I think this is one that we can make a compelling argument for before the voters, and I hope the voters have an opportunity to vote on this. If we don't, if we don't. You can't argue with the fact that the fire trucks are old, they're wearing out. You can't argue with the fact that the roofs on the firehouses are, are thirty, forty years old. We have to, we have to invest the money, uh, to, to replace a lot of stuff to make sure we can continue to deliver, um, services to residents. Uh, so I would, I would, uh, you know, I, I have opposed some tax increases in the past, uh, certainly, but I, I think this is one that we can make a compelling argument for, uh, before the voters, and I, I hope the voters have an opportunity to vote on this. If we don't, if we don't put it on the April ballot, we're gonna be waiting, uh, quite some time before we have another opportunity to get it on the ballot, and the clock will continue to tick on a lot of the equipment that's out on the street, and I, I think service will suffer over the next two years. So, it's in our best interest and in residents' best interest to, uh, have a chance to approve this now and start making the improvements sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, when you all gave me that vacation, I got to be a committee woman, and, uh, being a committee woman was a eye-opener for me because I found out how we scheduled things through the Democratic Central Committee to have a bond issue or any kind of thing that we want to vote. We look for the least amount of voters when they will vote, and then we put it on that. We did that with the MSD, and I was privy to hear the then-chair of the Democratic Central Committee talk about, "We don't want the people to be able to know about it." So what we talked about was how April was when you've already had all the elections, challenged elections just about, and it was the least time that you would have the most voters come out to decide an issue. So if we were really talking about putting something before the voters so that the most voters would be able to decide, it would not be an April election. That's the election we try to get things by. It would be an election in November or even March, but it would not be a, uh, November, I mean, I'm sorry, A- April election, I'm, April election. And, um, I stand to oppose this because when I look at these things that are listed in here, um, I guess since I've been down here, we've done two, three, I don't know, Mr. Alderman Villa may know, public safety kind of, uh, issues, and we got money for the firehouse for one thing, and it goes to something else. So once these things get passed, we don't have accountability of how they really, really, uh, get spent, and when I first got here, that was one of the first things I learned. We passed a public safety bond issue, and it was supposed to go to one thing, and, um, it was spent entirely on something else at the firehouse that was not supposed to be done, and I kept asking, "What happened to my firehouse over on Natural Bridge getting fixed up?" And it probably was fifteen years or more later when we had passed a couple of more, uh, bond issues, uh, that we were able to spend that money. Um, it's, uh, interesting that whenever we want to spend the issue, all of a sudden, crime is horrible, we gotta do something about it, we need more money to address these issues, we need more money, um, to give to, uh, uh, spending, uh, home repair program. I agree with the home repair program. I don't agree with giving money to a developer who has not put anything i- in the ground, and then we're gonna give him some more money, so I'm opposed to that. But I'm opposed to several things because, and I can't go into specifics anymore because it's been so long since this thing has been on the formal calendar, I would have thought in the interest of making sure that people were on board, this is the time that maybe we have a committee of the whole meeting, or we send this back to committee to talk about it, to get people's minds refreshed on it, because in talking to this people from yesterday, um, everybody came and told me about at least one or two things that they did not like in this bill, that why they would not support it. So I was not in on the hub because I was not for this bill in the first place because, uh, as I was originally told, some of it was going to go to a developer who I'm opposed to getting another dime of money. So, um, to, and then to give, uh, us five million dollars for the home repair program as a kind of cover for that, I am opposed to. And most specifically, again, I am opposed to having this election in April when we know that is when the least amount of people come out. If we're being honest with the people of the city of St. Louis, we should not be having elections when we know we have the lowest turnout, and we should be having it so we can get a true, um, a true picture of what the people want, and that would be November, or even better, March. Now, I think it's too late for March, but if we sit and held it all this time, it's not an emergency, and, um, we should not be trying to act like that the people have to do this right now, and, "Oh, we just want them to decide," and that the money will continuously be spent the way it's supposed to, 'cause the history has shown us it's not spent. And I'm glad that E and A sat down and kind of cut their deal, but there is, uh, twenty-eight members of the board, well, twenty-seven right now, members of the Board of Aldermen, and it would have been nice if we've been sat down and talked to again and consulted. And so I think this is a, uh, bad, uh, thing to do all around, and especially it's bad to put it in April to try to deceive, what I call deceiving the people, by putting it before them when the least amount of people will be tuned in to what's going on.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, members of the boards, I, I actually stand in support of this bill. I actually worked on the committee substitute, and does the floor substitute have everything I'd like to see? No, but I do think there were a lot of the stuff in there from the, uh, home repair program, which I felt was important, to the eight million for the demolition that I feel was important. I didn't like that the ward capital got dropped back a little bit, but, you know, fifteen million's better than nothing, um, and, and I know it gets divided amongst wards, so I actually think we should take the best that we can get, and that's just the best we can do, present it to the voters. I believe the voters are very competent. I believe the voters will make an intelligent decision, and there's twenty-eight of us in the room that are neighborhood leaders, and I think if we go to neighborhood meetings, we explain the pros and the cons, I think the, the people of the neighborhood deserve the right to make that decision, and, uh, so I stand in support, and I hope that this, whoever voted no votes to reconsider, because I voted for it in the first place. And again, not because I think it's the best bill, but I think it's the bill that has the most compromise to it that the biggest majority of people can live with.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, members of the board. On this Board Bill Twelve, maybe a good bill. Uh, I think the problem that we're really having is we haven't really been abreast of the breakdown of this two hundred million. Uh, I'm in support of getting it out so the voters can pass for it, but I think it's only fair as this body to sit down and talk about it so we know exactly how this money's going. I, you know, I just received this board bill probably yesterday, hasn't been discussed in Ways and Means. I know we've been going over this quite a bit. I don't really know your feelings, the comptroller's feelings, or the mayor's feeling, or any of the board members' feeling on how this board has been broken down, so, you know, last thing I want to do is pass out something that most of us is not in agreement with, but at the same time, it may be good, I haven't had enough time to review this board bill, so, you know, my opinion is, let's go through it. The last thing we want to do is hold it up at the polls. We don't want to do that, but we want to do what's right for our constituents. So, that's what I feel about it.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Mr. President, I thank you for, uh, the recognition. You know, I, I have to agree with my colleague from the twenty-sixth ward, um, you know, I don't, I don't personally sit on the Ways and Means Committee, so I was not intimately involved with the discussion around the two hundred million dollars that's involved with this board bill. Um, I know that we have this nice breakdown of, you know, roughly a dozen things that the money will be going towards, but there's nothing in here that expressly states, you know, which firehouses are going to get the money, you know, which city buildings are going to get the money, which city bridges are going to go get the money, uh, which homes and which neighborhoods are going to get access to this five million dollars. You know, I think it's incumbent upon us, if we're going to be spending two hundred million dollars and putting the city further into debt, that we really do need to have a more deliberative process that's, uh, associated with the, the funds that are here. I know there's quite a few of us that weren't terribly happy with how this passed out of committee, um, and with that, I would actually like to make a motion to refer this to committee for more consideration.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Second by Alderman from the sixth. Alderman from the eighth. Uh, the Alderman from the twenty-fifth made a motion to refer the, um, Board Bill Number Twelve Committee Substitute as.
On, on behalf of the sponsor, I, I would request that it be put back on the informal calendar.
Thank you. The Board Bill Committee Substitute for Board Bill Number Twelve has been added back to informal calendar. Alderman from the. Perfection Consent Calendar.
Board Bill One Eight Six, sponsored by Alderman Davis and Honors approving the petition to establish the fourth site Associate Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Eight Seven, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and Honors directing the mayor and the comptroller to sell certain real estate located between Branch and Dock Street at number five Branch Street in the, in St. Louis Port Authority, in as, in an as-is condition to Gunther Salt Company and Great Rivers Greenway District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty Seven, sponsored by Alderman Villa and Honors authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and the Coronda Led Commons Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Honors approving and authorizing the city to execute a consent to assignment and agreement to the extension of project completion dates of a development agreement between the city and Hallmark Hotels containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Twenty Nine, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and Honors to amend Section Seven of Honors Six Nine One Nine Zero, adjusting the salaries of employees in the sheriff's office and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty Eight, sponsored by Alderman Young and Honors recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from G Local Commercial and Office District and H Area Commercial District, J Industrial District, dual zoning of D Multiple Family Dwelling District, and G Local Commercial and Office District and dual zoning of D Multiple Family Dwelling District and H Area Commercial District to the D Multiple Family Dwelling District only in city blocks Three Eighty-Nine, Three Ninety, Four Oh One, Four Oh Two, Four Sixty, Four Point Four, Four Sixty-Four, Four Sixty-Five Point Oh Three, Four Sixty-Five Point Oh Four, Four Seventy-Two Point Oh Three, Four Seventy-Three Point Oh Three, and Four Seventy-Four Point Oh Three and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion for perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertaining second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? Alderman favors, signify, percent, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with Spencer Light Out of sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills Two Seventeen and Two Eighteen.
Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on motion for third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for the adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteen, entertaining second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Engrassia.
Aye.
Alderman Conway. I didn't hear it.
Aye.
Alderman Ortmann.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnoldt.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Alderman Howard.
Ald- Ald- Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Cruzen. Twenty-four a votes.
By vote, staying in motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and perfected it, and, uh, third read and finally passed the four mention, four mentioned bills, third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill One Eighty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and Honors recommended by the Port Authority Commission, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into, to a lease agreement between the city and Continental Cement Company, LLC, for property mooring privileges and easements on certain land on the unimproved wharf for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three, five-year mutual options.
Alderman from the second, you recognize on third reading, finally passed the Board Bill Number One Eighty-Eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for, uh, final passage of Board Bill One Eighty-Eight, and I request a roll call, please.
Moved by Alderman from the second, second by Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, this came before the Transportation Committee, of which I voted against it. Uh, one of the things that, uh, was very eye-raising to me, um, was that if you look in the appendix at the least, we are giving mooring rights away for, uh, annual rental of fourteen thousand, one dollar and fifty-three cents. That is just untenable. Now, to be fair, this, uh, particular contractor put some money into his site, and so he's invested a lot of money, but the way we do business is ridiculous down here. I get more rent in one of my apartments than we're paying for these mooring rights. This is just a, this is a giveaway. And, um, the Alderman from the twenty-fifth asked questions during this hearing about, "Do we do any kind of studies? How did we come to this amount?" Um, I asked questions about, "Do we bid these things out?", which we don't. It seems while I was gone that we passed the ordinance that says, "As long as that person wants to keep that lease, we automatically have to give it to him." And basically, we are giving it to him, we're not making him pay any money when you're paying, again, annual rental of fourteen thousand, fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. We are not a rich city. That is a ridiculous amount, um, and we don't have anything to back it up to show why that would be a good amount to pay. If we had some studies to say, "Well, look, this guy spent fifty million dollars on this site, and, um, normally we would be able to get this, this, and this, and this is why we're doing that," we got absolutely nothing, and we have a backup that says, "If he wants to keep this from now into perpetuity, as long as he keeps it, and he wants to do it, our ordinance allows him to keep it." I cannot beli- I'm glad I was not here when we passed that ordinance.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the second, you recognize, close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the final passage. With roll call, please. Thank you.
It's already been moved and seconded. It's already been moved by Alderman from the second, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Engrassia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnoldt.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmid.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Engrassia.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Cruzen. Twenty-two, aye votes, one no vote.
By a vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the second, and third read and final passed, board bill number 188.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 217, 218, and 188.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Second by Alderman from the 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will dispense with light items 21, 22. Misaligned, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday Ways and Means Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Tuesday Parks Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Wednesday Housing meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Thursday Neighborhood Development meeting at 2:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday Full Board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighth.
Tuesday morning, there will be a Ways and Means Committee meeting. If you have a bill that you want to be heard, this is last call. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Also, the Daltons are here today commemorating their Founder's Day, which will happen this weekend. Give them a round of applause. Any further announcements? Going once, going twice. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Alderman from the third, fourth, 21st, and 28th be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Board adjourns until January, Friday, January 30th, 2015.
But-
Have the wrong day?
No, that's, it is good. I think, what'd you say?
What's that?
I think he had the date right, unless I heard it wrong.
January 30th.
Yes.
That we adjourn until Friday, January 30th.
30th, yes.
Yes.
I don't know what the question was. Been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second, second by Alderman from the 25th, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand to adjourn.